Okay, good morning. I will call to order the special meeting of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for August 20th, 2019. And we will start with a salute to the flag. Mr. Mollath, will you lead us this morning?
I did.
In the salute?
Good morning.
Will you lead us in the salute to the flag, sir?
Excuse me?
Will you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I will.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
My hearing is a little off, sir.
We're all good.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number two, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There we go. Vaughn Hartung, Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy, Vice Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler.
Here.
Kitty Jung is absent. Jeanne Herman.
Here.
Interim County Manager Dave Solero.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Paula Correlli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Peart, County Clerk. You have a forum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, item number three.
Item number three is your public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, would you call public comment, please?
Just a minute, Mr. Chair. First up is Amanda Hilbert, followed by Iona Tomlinson.
Welcome.
Good morning, Amanda Hilbert. I'm here to basically speak about the problems I've been having. It's with the semi-truck trailer as storage. Everything's kind of passed over. I tried to get help back in July 9th, reached out to everybody. You were on vacation. Reached out to everybody, kind of shot some emails over to find out where I needed to go with things. Dave Solero did finally get back to me at one point with an email stating that he would look into it and get back to me on the phone. Left me a phone number to call him. I called, left messages, didn't get back. For a few days, he did get back to me, read out what he had found and that he needed to look over my file. And he would call me back in, what, two days, I believe it was? I never received anything back from you, David. Nothing came back for weeks. You even said to me on the phone that we had plenty of time to take care of this stuff, that it wasn't no rush. It wasn't, but today's the 20th now, that's my deadline. And you passed it on to your assistant, I believe? And she gave me a call, said she'd email me some stuff. She never emailed me anything. I reached back out to you again to let you know that I didn't get anything emailed. Never heard back a single word. I carbon copied Jeanne in that email. She did reach out to me, kind of gave me direction, but that wasn't, that was yesterday when I finally was able to get down to do anything. Some of my paperwork kind of got messed up, but in that matter, I was looking for direction. I was looking for some help and basically told I would get some help somewhere. I really just wanted this case put on hold so that we can push forward because I know you guys are working on making changes. I mean, I don't know how hard that is to do that. I know you had said that it went to the administrative hearing and that kind of made it a little bit rough for you, Dave. The thing is, is when I went back over my file, I did see that in there it stated that the reason that they pushed forward with our fines to begin with is because you told them to push forward with our fines. You were the one that actually told them to move forward after Jeanne Herman had it kind of put on hold while she was trying to get things figured out. So I feel really stuck in the whole situation. I really wanted help. I don't know where to go from here. I'm going to try to file the appeal today, I suppose, see if there's anything I can do, but I kind of got dumped on a lot by you, Dave, considering the fact that it was kind of in a motion to be able to be worked on and then turned around and pushed forward for us to be fined. It would have been able to be at least looked at, I would have thought, before February with everything that was already in motion, but thank you for your time. I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Iona Tomlinson, followed by Ms. Tammy Holdstil.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thanks for letting me ask this question. I want to start helping also the Washoe County area, so if you have any volunteer jobs that you need, let me know. My question is, we birdwatch and we ATV out on the BLM and with families and friends and stuff, and there is this coyote killing contest at Spanish Springs Bar called the Wayside Bar. And they have, they're not allowed to use BLM land to hunt coyotes for the contest. They kill like, I don't know, 60 coyotes on a day. But when there's a contest that has to do with like bullets and guns and winning and who gets the biggest coyote, who gets the most coyote, there seems to be this bullet frenzy going on. And so they're out on the BLM illegally. We've talked to Leo Drum from the BLM and he said that the Wayside Bar does not apply for SRP, which is a special recreational permit. I've learned way too much about this whole thing. You need to apply for one in order to use BLM land to have a contest. So my question is, BLM said that they don't really have enough enforcement for wardens. We've talked to the sheriff. The sheriff kind of says the same thing. I would be willing to pay for a warden for the day to talk to the contestants that sign up to say that, you know, you're not allowed to use BLM land so that we're all safe out there on the weekend without, you know, all these bullets going over our head trying to get as many coyotes as possible. So my question is, who, how best? The sheriff, I think, told me to come here and that I could apply for a special permit to hire a warden or a sheriff or something. So I'm just getting passed along and I just wondered how that weekend could possibly be more enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Tammy Holdstil. We'll need the overhead, please.
Welcome.
Morning. Tammy Holdstil, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. What you see right there is on Lemon Drive. It's called the Scott Ranch that is up for sale. And Mr. Solero told Councilwoman Bonnie Weber that this mess that was created last month would be cleaned up as of by 5:00 o'clock last night. This was on my way in today. It has not been cleaned up. I'm tired of the lying, and that's exactly what it is. We're doing our job, we're doing our job. It's not getting done. To prove a point... You see that HESCO barrier right there? That's been there since Lemon Drive was open two years ago. It was just pulled apart and laid on the ground and you guys spent supposedly, you're paying for them, which I know it's the state, but that's a part of a $2 million project right there. That has just been thrashed and left as trash. We are not trashy people and we do not deserve to have the county leaving trash around. Scott's Ranch is up for sale. How can they sell that piece of property having all that trash there? It's bad enough they've got the sewer plant right behind them and they've got water flooding their property, but then to have that kind of mess too? I'm ashamed of all of you guys. It's bad that senior staff needs, you're top-heavy. You don't have enough people to do the job. Get rid of the people that are top-heavy and get people in that are going to do the job. And if there aren't that many, there isn't enough people around to do the job, then they should be helping out. That's what a manager does, not sit on his duff and lie to people all the time. I don't know how to be nice anymore because there's no reason to be nice. We ask for things to get done and they don't get done. We get told they're going to get done and they never do. Our area is trashy because of what's happened and it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the public comment we have on this item, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Okay, I will close public comment. Mr. Manager, item number four.
Item number four is Commissioners' County Manager's Announcements, Reports and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates. Request for Information on Topics for Future Agendas. No discussion among Commissioners will take place on this item.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
The only item I have is I was noticed this morning that Commissioner Jung will be attending the Tahoe Summit and that's why she's not here today, so.
Okay. Commissioner Herman, you're signed in first.
We have a young lady in the audience that just spoke regarding her problem with the semi-trailer being used for storage. And I just was wondering, it seems like somehow the message didn't get to the people that were supposed, were still working on trying to find them and make life miserable for them. So I'd sure like to find a solution to that today.
Okay, is that all? Okay, Commissioners, anyone else? Okay, I'll start out just briefly here. So I, maybe you and I can work backwards, Mr. Solero, or maybe you and Commissioner Herman can work backwards on the Wayside Bar, which is actually in Lemon Valley, it's not in Spanish Springs. I think that's not necessarily an issue, I believe it's a wildlife issue, an Endow issue, is what I would think. Because if somebody has to hire a warden or something of that nature, I think that Endow has to be involved, so maybe you and Commissioner Herman can work backwards with that and we can try to understand what, if any, role that Washoe County or the commission would play. With respect to the HESCO on Lemon, have Mr. Solero, Mr. Solero, Mr. Smith, forgive me, Mr. Solero, have Mr. Smith work backwards and let's figure out why, I mean, why has that just been discarded there? I think that's a reasonable question. And then in Spanish Springs, you and I know that a complaint was made at 1:30 in the morning on Sunday, which is the continued violation of the special use permit. So what I want is, we need to bring the property manager in. Let's schedule an agenda item and start the proceedings to figure this out. And if necessary, we'll pull their special use permit. I'd like an agenda item to potentially pull that special use permit. If they cannot work within the parameters of the hours of operation and do it consistently, and it's not our responsibility to inform new tenants as to the hours of operation. So I guess what we'll do is we'll get their attention by potentially pulling their special use permit. I promise that will get their attention. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Solero. Anyone else? Okay, we will close. Item number four. Item number five, consent. Mr. Manager.
Chair, item number five is your consent agenda, which is, consists of one item 5A.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler. I have second by Commissioner Herman. Before we move on, I do have public comment under, is it the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
I do see a name, Mr. Mollath. Did you sign up for consent? This is approval of minutes?
The approval of the minutes?
No, on item six.
Okay.
Item six, okay, all right. Make that correction, if you would, Madam Clerk.
Will do.
Okay, I have no one else signed in. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, item number six.
Item number six is a recommendation to approve filing an appeal to the Nevada Supreme Court of the Second Judicial District Court's decision in Lakes at Lemon Valley versus Washoe County, a case concerning the denial of a tentative subdivision map application for 98 single-family lots on 33.97 acres located near the intersection of Military Road and Lemon Drive. And I believe the District Attorney's Office is here to present this item.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nathan Edwards, Washoe County District Attorney's Office. I've handled the legal proceedings, the judicial review in this case. You all recall the hearing and the decision of the board, which was to deny the subdivision, a 98-lot, single-family subdivision out off of Lemon Drive. And the developer in the case challenged that denial by judicial review and Judge Breslow sided with the developer after oral argument and briefing in the case and overturned the county commission's denial of that subdivision. The decision today for you to make is whether or not to authorize the District Attorney's Office to file a notice of appeal and pursue an appeal of that decision in the Nevada Supreme Court. Timelines for that appeal are subject to the Supreme Court's discretion. There are a number of factors that could come into play there, such as the possibility that they might kick the case over to the Nevada Court of Appeals, or they might simply keep it themselves. We don't know if they would have oral argument or not on the case. A typical timeframe on an appeal like this would be a year or two, year and a half before you get a final decision in that matter. There is currently pending before the District Court a motion for attorney's fees and costs from the developer's side in the neighborhood of $45,000. If the case did go through to appeal, that number would be enlarged if they did prevail on appeal and the county could potentially be on the hook for that. Plus, I'm informed in speaking with Mr. Mollath this morning that there is a pending transaction with respect to the property that is hanging in the balance based on the outcome of this proceeding here this morning and whether or not an appeal is going to be filed. He can provide more details about that when he speaks and I know he'll do that. The decision really comes down to whether or not the county commission believes that this is a case where it's important enough for you to defend your jurisdiction and whether or not you are comfortable with the risk that the county would, could face by pursuing an appeal, which would be the additional attorney's fees plus potential, potentially a claim for damages for delaying the project beyond where we are right now. And that's a decision for you all to make today. I've already explained to you, but I'll put it on the record again. The reason we're here asking for direction and authorization from you is because of a recent case in the Nevada Supreme Court called the Hanson Case, where the Nevada Supreme Court threw out an appeal filed by the Nevada Commission on Ethics because the director and the chair in that case filed the notice of appeal, but there was no formal action by the Ethics Commission to authorize the appeal. So we need direction one way or the other as the attorney's in the case and then we'll go forward from there. You have the staff report and you know the bones of this situation and you remember the case, and so I won't get into any more specifics. This is not a point in the proceedings today where, you know, the merits of the actual subdivision and the details of that type of thing are up for consideration. It's simply whether or not the county is going to appeal at this point. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and I know Mr. Mollath for the developer would like to speak after me as well.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions? And again, it has nothing to do with the merits of the planning decision. This has everything to do with the appeal itself. Are there any questions for staff? Okay.
Thank you.
I see none. Mr. Mollath, the typical amount of time that we would give the applicant's representative is five minutes. Is that enough time, sir, or do you need more?
That is.
Is that an adequate amount of time?
I think that's enough time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please set the clock for five minutes, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Mr. Mollath, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Thank you, I apologize for my hearing. I got a little hearing.
It's all good. It's hard to hear out there with the microphones.
Couple observations. I noticed in the staff report, under the summary section, it says the strategic objectives supported by this item is stewardship of the community, or our community. And I'm trying to figure out how that plays into what the staff report talks about, but it seems to me that the stewardship of the county is really requiring the county commissioners to follow the planning law and not ignore it. Follow the case law, the legal law that governs the planning and zoning ordinance of the county. That seems to be the stewardship of the county. So I don't quite understand what the staff report talks about when it talks about strategic objective. So that's first observation. The second observation is the fiscal impact. It says there's no direct fiscal impact of filing an appeal and it talks about attorney's fees and costs, but what's not left or not put in there is the cost of damages that may occur relative to the denial of the project and the consequence of the denial. Now bear in mind, this was a pretty simple land use planning action, right-in, right-out, use of a U-turn, no zone change, no master plan amendment, no special use permit, tentative map, very simple. And so there's really no, and I heard council say that, you know, protect your jurisdiction, but there's really nothing that this case that tells me that this is a protection of your jurisdiction case. This is simply a decision that was made wrongly, certainly probably in good faith. I'm not saying it wasn't. But certainly the facts, the planning facts, the engineering facts, all the rules and regulations concerning how you get ingress and egress to pieces of property which are set forth in the regional plan, set forth in all the ordinances, are adopted in guidelines and handbooks, how you get access, NDOT uses them, RTC uses them. Those were the issues of this case. So what I'm asking you today is to approve the tentative map pursuant to the court order. Stop the bleeding, certainly on our side, but certainly on the county side, because if it goes forward on appeal, we'll spend double again on the appeal over a year and a half to two years. And that's going to be something that the county's going to be responsible for and the District Court's going to decide that because fees are discretionary upon the court. But there's nothing in the statutes that says that discretion is governed by stewardship of the county or strategic objectives or things of that sort. And then the issue becomes if we don't have the transaction that's contemplated to be done on this property on the 15th of next month, September, damage is going to start to accrue. And those damages, and I don't have any figures at this point in time because I don't know how long it's going to last or what the accountants say on that, but there will be a damage model that will then go into place that I'm discussing with the accountants, how that damage model applies, you know, whether it deals with the basis of the property and lost revenues and all that, those are for the accountants to figure out. But there will be a damage model, as I recommended to the client, prepared if this case gets appealed and we're now in delay and we can't close the transaction, we're contemplating on the 15th. And that means the county's going to look at, you know, essentially close to $100,000 in legal fees and costs throughout the whole process, plus whatever the accountants tell us what that damage model says it is. And for a period of two years, that could be substantial because it's not only the loss of the use of money and damages related to the project, but it's the interest on that money over a period of time. So I would ask the county commissioners to exercise their wise discretion and say, the time has come to resolve this matter, not appeal it. We'll submit the attorney's fees to the court. I'm not adding anything to the attorney's fees as of today. If we don't have an appeal, that's fine. What I've spent between the time of the judgment and what we spend today, there's not going to be any charges for any of that. That's not going into the billing and we'll submit it to the court this week and that's what I would request. I think that's a wise move on the part of the county because this is a simple case. It's not a case that's a public outcry case or something that is, you know, well, should we do it or should we not do? It's a pretty simple case.
Your time has expired, Mr. Mollath.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions at this point? We do. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question, I think, Nate, if you would come up. Could you explain to me why the issue of right-in, right-out was the only issue that was litigated in light of the fact that, as Commissioner Hartung indicated, there are other issues involved with why the county decided to agree with the planning commission's decision?
Yeah. I can talk about that a little bit, just sort of in the general context of what's being done here today. That's maybe a little bit, if we get too specific on that, it's going to get a little bit outside the agenda scope today. Right-in, right-out was the issue that, when reviewing the record as a whole, we had, I think, an 800-page record or something to that in that neighborhood in this case. When you go through and you look at the planning commissioner's comments and the county commissioner's comments, that's the one issue that predominates the discussion and is consistently, it's the thread that's consistent throughout all the discussion. And so that was sort of the one isolated issue that it appeared from the record that the focus was placed on, both at the planning commission and the county commission. So that's the simple answer to your question.
So then, as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, so then, when this is appealed, on the appeal, the appeal will only consider the issue of the right-in, right-out and the legality of whether or not the county commission and the planning commission did the right thing with this project and not any of the other factors that are involved?
I think that there's a possibility the Supreme Court might consider other issues, but I think that would be a difficult sell to get the Supreme Court to review something else. There are doctrines in the law that allow them to review decisions even if it wasn't actually, you know, focused on or discussed in the briefing or things like that, but I think that would be a tough sell and it would be likely that the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals, if they kicked it there, would focus on the access issue.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, no, continue. You have the floor.
So I guess, I guess I have, I have some concerns about the overall issue of the fiscal responsibility to the county, which could be significant. Maybe $100,000 in legal fees is not significant, but if the party decides to go after us from the perspective of damages to the developer, they could be significant. We could use that money in Lemon Valley in a much better way. On the other hand, I have concerns about this project because I have concerns about adding more housing out there until we've resolved the problem of the water in the lake and all the other issues that go on. To me, the issue of right-in, right-out is not an issue because we do it other places and so I am really much more concerned about the overall issue. And based on that, I don't feel at this time that I can support this appeal.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and open up public comment and then we'll bring it back and we'll complete the deliberation. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment, please?
I have one person signed in under this item, Ms. Tammy Holdstil. And as she's approaching the dais, Mr. Chair, I did receive an email communication from Mr. Steve Wulgast supporting the appeal, which I'll place on the record for today's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Holdstil, welcome.
Morning, Tammy Holdstil, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. After listening to the gentleman speak, he spoke out both sides of his face. He told you that they need to develop this, but yet they're planning on selling it. And the selling of it depends upon the approval of the tentative map. Well, if he's selling it, he's changing title, why would he have a tentative map? So I have issues with the threats and the issues all the way around about this property. The developer, we know for a fact, has not abided by regulations upfront to begin with. He was caught two days before the planning commission meeting, and this goes to the merits of the case, of course, that he was destroying area that he wasn't supposed to touch. It was a no-touch zone and they did it anyway because he wanted rock for another property that he has over on Sky Vista, which went from county to city, which is a violation. So what I'm saying is, you've appealed and fought on a whole bunch of other stuff. I've been part of it and I know about it, and I think you need to stand your ground. Why are you going to let somebody like this threaten the safety of people? I do not believe in right-ins and right-outs, not in that area especially, because how is a fire engine from Sted going to do? They're going to have to go all the way up to, you know, find another way around. They're going to have to go all the way up to, you know, find another way around to get through traffic to get to a fire. And when the homes are so close together, the whole thing's going to be on fire. There are too many issues that can happen with the way this has developed, and I do not appreciate what I heard from this man. I don't appreciate the developer. I have no respect for what they're trying to do. You have a lot of issues out there that I'm disappointed we're not fought on, as far as you have a sewer plant that needs upgrading, or demolishing, or moving to Stead. Stead doesn't have service. There's a lot of merits to this case that weren't argued, and I'm very disappointed in the fact that it wasn't, and it was only right-in, right-out. It was like it was purposely thrown by your attorneys. How you direct them is going to be up to you, but I think you need to fight for the people, and those people that are going to be buying those homes are in danger. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the public comment we have signed in on this item.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time that has not signed in? Okay. I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the board. Commissioner Burke Bigler, I have you signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Holdstill does make a very valid, present a very valid concern about the right-in, right-out as far as the safety and fire concerns are, and so I do think that's important. I do, I have a question for Mr. Solero, Mr. Manager. If we don't appeal and the project moves forward in some form, do we have the ability to put additional restrictions on what they do and how they do it there?
For the record, Dave Solero, interim county manager, I'm actually going to need to ask legal on that question. I don't believe we have the ability to impose additional conditions on this item.
Mr. Chairman, for the Commissioners, the approval that was sought here is for a tentative map. The court, the District Court's order was that the map be approved by the county, and that will set in place the requirements to meet the conditions for a final map, which are, they're substantial, but they're not discretionary-type decisions. It's satisfying the requirements for the infrastructure that's in place, bonds and securities for, to secure the performance on those things. And so, there won't be a lot left to do as far as exercising discretion, and once the final map is approved, then the developer can begin selling lots and developing the land. So, there won't really be many opportunities for the county to fundamentally condition the development of the project. Tentative maps and final maps are not really vigorous planning tools. You're really, I think what your question is pointing at is more the kinds of things you do with special use permits, or zone changes, or master plan amendments. As Mr. Mollith said in his presentation, this was not that kind of a case. This was a straight-up tentative map.
Thank you. Mr. Leparelli, I appreciate your comments. Okay.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I have, after reading some of the staff report that's presented, and obviously hearing presentations this morning from Mr. Mollith and Mr. Edwards, you know, I feel that the decision that was made by not only the Planning Commission and this board were valid commissioned, valid decisions. Not only were they valid decisions, but it wasn't, as pointed out, it wasn't the only decision, the only merit that has been discussed this morning about the right-in, right-out wasn't the only merits based upon why we made the decision. I think the other thing that we need to discuss is that planning resides here at the County Commissions, in which the public has an opportunity to have that discussion in an open forum. That's why we have these meetings, that's why we schedule them and agendize them. A courtroom is not that place. A court is a place where a judge gets to decide one way or another. That is not a planning, that is not, in my opinion, a venue in which planning should take place. So, from that standpoint, I believe that the discussions and decisions that are made by this board are what really should stand clear, and so it's my opinion that we should support an appeal in regards to this case and move forward with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So, for me, I feel much the same way, and I think you articulated it well, Mr. Lucy. I'm very concerned with a court overriding a planning decision when that is not his bailiwick. And with all due respect to Judge Breslow, I'm fairly certain he did not go to school for planning. And while I recognize his acumen in being able to look at cases for their merit, I believe that in this particular case, I believe we did make the right decision, although there have been a number of right-in, right-outs, and I can cite many around the region. I can also cite how they have failed miserably around the region, and for that reason, we have started to move away from that utilization. RTC was the one who put that on us, by the way. We wanted them to have more of an intersection there, and RTC said, no, we're not going to give you a break. We're not going to, we're not going to basically do a cut down the middle, because it's the distance from the two intersections was too close to have a light and a light and a light. I'm terribly concerned about a court overturning our decisions because of what they couldn't find as merit. When we looked at a number of things, it was just not the right-in, right-out. We looked at everything from water flow across the property to its consistency with adjoining properties, and so I would ask our staff to, you know, to really look at those kinds of things if we do reach a decision that an appeal should be made. For me, I will tell you, this is an easy one. I feel that our decision should not be overturned, especially when I don't see them as arbitrary and capricious. So, we'll see how we vote here in just a moment, but I have another Commissioner signed in, and I'll allow her to speak now. Commissioner Herman, it's your turn.
I think I'm on. Thank you. The reason I voted against it in the first place, you know, against this map, was because we still don't have the sewer capacity to take care of this subdivision. That was, and that's pretty consistent with the way I voted right down the line, so I would feel like this is something we should really think about.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Burke Bigler, you're up again. Just put her to a vote. It's okay.
Oh, that's, I know. I just want to say that I agree with everything you said, but I still continue to have concerns about the fiscal impact on the county. I am very worried about long-term fiscal impacts on the county on a lot of different issues, and I think it is, it perhaps is a bit overreaching for us to step out into the unknown when we know we have other fiscal responsibilities going on, so. But I can't disagree with what either of you guys have said, so with that, I will stay where I'm at, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, sort of my final comment is, I don't disagree with the fear of making a fiscal decision that could potentially cost the county. However, what is true is not always pleasant, and what is pleasant is not always true. So, I will leave it at that. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion either way. Mr. Lucy, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to bring a motion forward to the board for their consideration. I move that we authorize an appeal to the Nevada Supreme Court of the Second Judicial District Court decision at the lakes at Lemon Valley versus Washoe County, CV 18-02374, a case concerning the denial of a tentative subdivision application for 98 single-family lots on 33.97 acre parcel, APN 552-210-18, located near the intersection of Military Road and Lemon Drive.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I will second it. Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Hartung, under discussion. Is there any, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would just make one discussion, I mean, one comment to Commissioner Burke Bigler's comments. She's absolutely right. We do have fiscal responsibilities in multitude places of the county. However, I'd like to remind this board that the decision to move forward with this court case and the appeal was not brought by, not on the act of this commission, nor was it a mechanic staff. It was by the owner and developer of this piece of property, who has forced us to make this place. So, realistically, it is not the county's decision. We are protecting the county and protecting future development and future citizens, but it was not the decision to just randomly or frivolously spend money inappropriately. This is something that was brought to us and enforced us to do. So, with that, I would stay with my motions, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I would agree, especially on future decisions, and so, is there any other discussion, Commissioners? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries, I believe, Madam Clerk, would you bring it up? I think it carries three to one. It does. Motion carries three to one. Mr. Manager.
Chair, that brings us to item number seven, which is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person. It may pertain to matters both on and off the commission's agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person and be made to the Commissioners as a whole.
Madam Clerk, would you call public comment, please?
Certainly. Ms. Tammy Holdstill?
Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. I think, even though I know it's going to be expensive, I think it was the right move. I feel that if developers keep throwing their weight around the way they do, we're in for bigger trouble, and you're going to have more lawsuits when residents start getting hurt more. So, there's got to be a time to draw a line, and I think you did the right thing. Now, I've got to draw my line again regarding management staff not allowing their staff to do their jobs. That is a culvert on Tupelo Street on the other side, and all of our culverts look like this. They are overwhelmed with weeds that the county is supposed to be taking care of. It shouldn't be like that. Lemon Drive, all of our streets look like that, except for mine, because I've got rock in mine, and I take care of it. But the main thoroughfares look like this, and they need to be taken care of. It goes back to, our area is neglected and not maintained properly by the county, and it needs to be. And as many times as we've called Mr. Solero, we don't get responses back. I stopped calling. I just come in here and embarrass you guys this way. Get it on the record, since nothing else seems to work. We need it cleaned up before winter hits. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the public comment we had signed in, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time who has not signed in? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Mr. Manager.
Chair, that brings us to item number eight. Commissioners, county managers, announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information on topics for future agendas.
Okay. Vice Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One update I would like from staff is in regards to Reindeer Lodge. I know staff had mentioned that the demolition of Reindeer Lodge was halted because of asbestos, and that was being mitigated, and that was going to take about a month before they could continue demolition. I haven't seen any action on that in the last 30 days, so I'd like to get an update really realistically, because I'd like to have that demolition, because if there truly is asbestos prior to winter and water coming, I'd like to see that taken care of before we move into a wet season. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one else, I don't think I'll have any problem or any pushback on adjourning us. Thank you so much for coming in early.